My name is Mr. Chair. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome to tonight's planning board session. Please be aware of the fire exits. They are to your left-hand side of the room. And in case there's an emergency, please move in a calm order to leave. And please do not take the elevator, take the stairs. All these meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record of minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of that agenda are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. If you do have a name that needs specific spelling, please do that for the matter of the recording of the minutes. I'm sure it'll be appreciated. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions just to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on the decision. No further input is allowed after that point. And with that, would you please call the first case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number PB 17317-1, upon the matter of request by Warren R. McGrath acting as agent for John Coshani and Caroline Andrews for subdivision approval to re-subdivide four lots into two lots on premises 423419 and 411 Lakefront and 57 Delta Terrace and an R2 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Mark Deroo, and I work for Warren R. McGrath Land Surveyors, 1945 East Ridge Road, Suite 8A Rochester 14622. I'm also the representative for John Coshani, who owns five lots in the town of Arandaquay. One of the lots, Lot 100, is known as 57 Delta Terrace and contains 43 feet of lot frontage along Delta Terrace. The next two lots he owns, Lot 102 and Lot 30, have addresses listed as 423 and 419 Lakefront. Mr. Coshani also owns two additional lots that are contiguous to the first -- or the second two mentioned. Those are lots K and L and have the same exact address, 423 and 419 Lakefront. Mr. Coshani has been in talks with the neighbor Caroline Andrews of 411 Lakefront, a lot that currently is landlocked, containing no road frontage. Caroline Andrews also has an additional lot to the north. These properties of Coshani and Andrews are -- share a common border. In an effort to help out the neighborhood as well as create a saleable lot, Mr. Coshani has agreed to sell a portion of the lot, known as 57 Delta Terrace, to the neighbor, Ms. Andrews, to allow the homeowner to now have a lot with road frontage no longer being Along with that purchase, he is selling an additional 10-foot strip along that common boundary line. The map in front of you shows the proposed new configuration of the project. First is the creation of the previously mentioned road frontage lot for the owner at the residence of 411. Second is a combination of Lot 30 and the remaining portions of Lot 100 and 102. The northernmost portion of the map shows a combination of the 10-foot strip of Caroline Andrews with her current lot and the combination of L and the remaining portion of Lot K to create a total project of four lots.
Is that it?
That's it.
Before you step down, Carrie, I know this has been before the zoning board several times.
Yeah, it was a subject to area variances associated with the creation of the lots. I will note that the variance application was actually to create two individuals, sort of to replicate the existing, what is currently the existing building lots at 419 and 423. What's before this board is actually a modification to that originally conceived plan where now a portion of the property is being conveyed to the neighbor at 411, and so then there would only be the creation of one building lot. However, the variances that were obtained at -- through the zoning board are still valid in terms of the setback relief, and in fact, now less relief is probably needed as a result of the new configuration that's before the board with this subdivision plan and request for approval.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, does the board have any questions?
I don't.
Anybody?
None.
I don't either. We reviewed this quite extensively at the workshop. Okay, with that, I'd like to -- you can have a seat, and I'd like to open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak about this project, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ed Gardner, Edgar Gardner. I'm here with my wife Linda. We reside at 76 Madison Terrace, which is also known as 403 Lakefront in Arandaquay. We're the immediate neighbors of Caroline's. We live to the west of her, so we are as close to the proposed change lot as anyone, with the exception of Karen, whose name I don't recall, last name I don't recall, living to the east. We have lived there for 10 years in that neighborhood that might qualify as a short-timer, but we've lived there 10 years. It's a tight-knit neighborhood, and we've grown very fond of it. We've also invested a substantial amount of money, at least in our terms, a substantial amount of money, in not only buying that lot, but renovating the house, and we have a commitment to the neighborhood as such. Knowing some of the history of those properties and seeing what bedraggled places there were before, with the houses cheek-by-jowl, very close together, it comes as a relief to see a single building lot there instead of two building lots. Neighbors won't be able to peek in each other's bedroom windows from adjacent houses quite as easily, which is a positive thing. Having seen that change over the last year with houses being torn down, we are absolutely in favor of and support of this change, in part because Caroline is our neighbor. We've seen the trouble she goes through to cope with landlocked lot. Landlocked lot. And it is onerous. So I don't see any negatives to our neighborhood. I see only positives. Having a small amount of real estate experience, I don't believe for a second that the value of two tiny little lots is anywhere close to the value of a single, far more buildable lot. I really don't see a downside at all. I see a positive for the neighborhood. There have been rumors floating around the neighborhood occasionally. One of those is that there's going to be a four-story high-rise. There's another rumor that, oh, there's going to be an eight-bedroom house. They're wild rumors, and nobody would buy that lot to build places like that. Someone who buys that new lot will probably be downsizers or empty nesters such as ourselves. And it'll be attractive under the new configuration to that kind of marketplace. Another concern for the neighborhood is a walkway across the top of the bluff in the front of our houses. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. It's a part of the fabric of the neighborhood. We can set our clocks by the dog walkers. Some of them are here tonight, walking their dogs on that walkway. It's a precious part of the neighborhood. My only reservation, potential reservation to the lot change would be if the right-of-way for that walkway were to go away. But I don't think it will. I think the walkway will remain intact, and that's important to all of our neighbors. So in summary, as the immediate neighbors, we're firmly in support of this rezoning or reallocation of the lot lines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to the board on this matter?
My name is Douglas Knippel. Last name is spelled K-N-I-P-P-L-E. I reside at 44 Madison Terrace. I am a new resident. I moved here in July of 2015. And I am, as our other neighborhood just spoke, concerned for the integrity of the neighborhood. And we -- I and a number of other people spoke at a zoning board hearing at the beginning of May vehemently opposing the original plans, which were very sketchy, very sketchily put before the Zoning Board of Appeals at that meeting. And I have to express considerable amount of dissatisfaction with what happened subsequently. The meeting was tabled at our suggestion, since a third lot, which was the lot that exists on Delta, which is to become the new future driveway for these properties, was not even considered as part of the zoning variance request. And so the matter was tabled, and subsequently, at the meeting in June, I requested, and a number of other neighbors who spoke at the initial meeting of the zoning board in May, and it was listed on the agenda as tabled. When in fact, the zoning board opened the matter, no one from the public was available to reiterate their concerns from the previous meeting. And, you know, there's a significant amount of discontent with the procedural irregularities that occurred with the Zoning Board of Appeals in this matter. That being said, I personally argued at that initial meeting that these lots were too small for two 2,100-square-foot homes to be built. And it appears that this is now no longer the case with this planned subdivision. But what I would strongly request is that we have a proper reconsideration of the zoning matters, including the setback from the public right-of-way, the public -- I shouldn't say "public," it's deedholders in the Somerville land tract, which I happen to be a member of. And we are very concerned about continuing incursions in the public, in the deedholders' access to Lakefront ingress and egress, and the setback requirements in particular for these two proper -- for these now proposed reconstructed properties. So this is my main complaint with regard to what's before this board tonight. My concern, and the concern of many of the neighbors, is that the deedholders' rights have been frequently -- how can I put it diplomatically? Taken in the past as a result of actions of this town and people who acquire Lakefront land and think that they have a right to own the Lakefront, basically. So I strongly encourage you to consider the matter of making sure that we have a proper hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals to reconsider these reconfigured lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on this matter?
I'm Frank Dorbela from 26 Tone Terrace, and I don't know if it's appropriate to address the walkway and the beach rights. I know it was brought up, but one question I had is the old town building and zoning map shows the walkway. And then, for some reason, the town started using the county tax map, which shows no boundaries, no walkway. And I talked to the zoning board head of her, and she said, "There is no Lakefront," and that people don't have beach rights down there. So there was a -- there's a bunch of history on that. But back in -- there was a Young versus Caffaro case. He originally bought the beach from the railroad. And then he tried to turn it into a public beach, and the neighbors took him to court, and they established that they had beach rights if you bought a deed in Somerville, and that the public did not, and he couldn't, like, charge admission. He wanted to have concessions down there where Harbor Square is right now, or Westage. So since then, there's been intrusions on the beach. So like, Pat Mulger, he was a town attorney, he addressed the matter as far as the walkway should remain open, and people should have access to it. So I'd like to, if I could...
Could you just point out for us, is there particular relevance to the area of the walkway and the proposed subdivision and lot lines? Is there a particular concern that you wanted to draw the board?
Well, does the -- I'm not sure how close he is to the right-of-way on the new plan. I saw the old ones.
Okay. Would that be helpful to you?
Is that the new -- I had seen the old map on the zoning board, but...
This one's timestamped June 29.
Yeah, this map's funny. So it looks like the deck is over on the right-of-way a little bit on one corner.
Sorry, could you explain which corner you're talking about?
The would be what's...
That would be the east.
The northeast corner of the porch or the deck.
That's existing, right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's an existing structure. That's not one of the -- that's not one of the...
That's not, yeah.
The property that's subject to the subdivision application. So the two properties, 419 and 423, each of them had, and I say "had" in the past tense, small, single-family cottage homes, which have subsequent to the zoning board's variance application and approval, those properties were demolished. And one of them was actually a subject of town order to be demolished because of unsafe structure conditions that was designated by the town board. And so those two buildings are no longer there. And so in this instance, the building that's being referred to as an existing home, not currently a part of this application, just so you're aware.
So if I could, I'd like to submit this. It basically explains the subdivision map that the town is not using, but they should be. They're just using a tax map, and it doesn't show the -- actually, the path we're talking about is actually called Ontario Boulevard. It's 50 foot wide. And it's clearly shown on the subdivision map. So if I could, if you guys want to just read it over, nothing really probably to do with this particular case, but the zoning board and the -- and I'm sure the planning board has never heard of this even. But so I got a -- I know I got a few of these.
You can give that to Michelle.
I got a bunch if you want to...
Michelle will actually distribute them to us.
Okay. So there's like five or six of them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. So that should do it.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there anybody?
Address the right-of-way issue?
You'll get a chance at the end, after everybody spoke. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on this matter? Go on once, I'll close the public hearing. With that, would you like to please come back up and address any of the comments that were made?
Basically, the only comment I have is that the issue before us is a lot line revision and combination of lots. It is not a site plan at this time. So the issue of the right-of-way is, you know, to me, not relevant. There is no proposed construction on the lot being presented at this time, and I'm sure the future owner of the lot, or the current owner of the lot, whoever builds, will be addressing the right-of-way when they present it for site plan approval.
And just as a clarification, there would not be site plan review associated with a residential development. However, they would have to conform to the zoning variances that establish setback requirements from the lot line. And then certainly, this would be something that town building staff in conjunction with the Department of Public Works would ensure that any future building of a single-family residential home was compliant with any required setbacks and right-of-way issues.
And you would envision, based on the lot line configuration, as you've laid it out, there's a sufficient building envelope somewhere within there to construct whatever would be constructed and not infringe on the right-of-way, correct? That's the way you've laid out the lots? Correct. And actually, looking at the original proposed home size to the new configuration, it allows for the home to be pulled further away from what is known as the common right-of-way. It would allow them to shift it closer to the former Lot 100.
I do have a question. Is there a restriction that prevents anybody else from building on this line that we know of? And I don't know who to address that question to.
You're talking about the right-of-way?
Right. I mean, can somebody put up, park a shed right on the right-of-way?
That's a private contractual matter between the deedholders and the folks that are benefited by the easement, so that's more of a legal issue between neighbors and not necessarily something that the town would be...
But it's not a covenant within the neighborhood.
That I can't speak to, but it's not... So when an owner constructs a building, that's -- those restrictions are something they need to be cognizant of, and their neighbors potentially have a cause of action, but it's not something that the town would essentially be policing.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we close this, I do want to bring to everybody's attention, we did receive other input on 731, and I'll read it in for the record. Dear Planning Board, as I am unable to attend the meeting on 731, 2017, and as the owner of 60 and 64 Madison Terrace, I would like to express that I have no objections to the subdivision proposal PB 17317-1 for John Coshani and Caroline Andrews. Thank you. Scott Heckert, 60 Madison Terrace. Any other questions by members of the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody looks at their packet of information. You will see a seeker. Short form. Everybody's seen that. Does anybody need any time to review that, or Carrie, anything you want to bring to our attention special?
No, this is fairly straightforward in terms of environmental impact. This was a site of two former single-family residential dwelling units. The proposed subdivision is going to be creating lot lines that will allow for the development of one single-family unit and the conference of land to the neighboring adjacent property owner, and it will correct what had been a landlocked parcel for maybe the history of time here in this neighborhood. And so there weren't any environmental impacts that would be cause for concern, so it's a negative declaration that's being recommended.
So with that, do I have a motion?
I will move that on PB 17317-1, that we list as an unlisted action and a negative declaration in regards to seeker. I'll second.
Okay, with that, all in favor, please vote aye. All those against, please say nay. Any abstains? And nobody's absent. Thank you. This passes. Seven, with seven ayes. Thank you very much.
You still need to obtain the subdivision approval.
Sorry. It's throughout the second page.
PB -- case PB 17317-1, upon the matter of request by Warren R. McGrath acting as agent for John Coshani and Caroline Andrews for subdivision approval to re-subdivide four lots into two lots on premises 423, 419, and 411 Lakefront and 57 Delta Terrace and an R2 residential district. I propose that we pass it.
Adopt it.
Adopt it? Approve? This is subdivision approval, right? So approve.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now it passes. Thank you very much.
Is there a planning board dictionary? I need a planning board, planning board thesaurus. You, put it on the website. Approve? Adopt? I say yes. Actually, I have notes written. Here's the words you used, and I am humble.
Give me one second.
Are you ready?
Okay, ready for the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 17317-2, upon the matter of request by Land Tech acting as agent for Robinos Italian Food Corporation for revised site plan approval to renovate the existing parking lot and improve drainage with site-related improvements on premises 1304 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Shiraba. I'm here with -- from Land Tech representing Robinos. Also, this evening, with me this evening are the owners, Joe and Phyllis, are the owners of Robinos, and intern Jack Shiraba. Please don't ask him any hard questions. That's next year. That's next year. So we're here this evening to discuss the renovations of the proposed parking lot at Robinos. This parking lot's been in disrepair for a little while, and Joe Robino came to the town to inquire about the process of repaving his parking lot, and to his shock, was told he had to go to the planning board, and that's nothing that town staff did wrong, it's just that the changes he wanted to do to the parking lot was modifying the original site plan approved back in 1984. So as we discussed at the workshop, there are several features to the parking lot that were challenging. One of the main features was a large island in the middle of the parking lot. It restricted drive aisles to lengths or widths that weren't appropriate, less than 12 feet in some cases, and created some traffic patterns that weren't -- they were less desirable. Also, there were several drainage issues. The site is lower than Ridge Road, so as you, as we all know, the water drains towards the building and actually gets captured by corners of the building, creating drainage problems, which as a result, has the asphalt in very serious disrepair. The site is typical to other projects on the north side of Ridge Road. There is no storm sewer, no dedicated storm sewer to the site, so it utilizes a series of dry wells throughout the site to collect the rainwater and dissipate it at a slower rate. So our plan before you, as we discussed, was reviewed at the workshop, and I'd like to just kind of go over a few of the items that we talked about, and we've made those changes to the plan. So we've added a bike rack to the site plan. I know we talked about that.
John, do we have a new plan in front of us, or is this...
Nope, this is the same plan. I just, I gave you a memo discussing the changes. So they're fairly minor, so I didn't think they needed a new plan.
Take notes. We like new plans.
So I can identify the changes, but they're very minor. So the changes was we wanted a bike rack added to the plan. So we have no problem adding a bike rack. We're probably going to put it underneath the porch, so we didn't show it, so it's under an overhang. One of the other issues we talked about was the dumpster. Originally, we had a dumpster enclosure located at the north... Originally, we had a dumpster enclosure located at the northwest corner of the parking lot, which was over top of a public sewer. So, we modified that and put the dumpster near the loading dock area, which is this rectangle over here. As you recall from the workshop, we requested to do that, we moved that. Another item that we discussed was the exit sign. Those of us familiar with Robinos, leaving the site, when you pull out, on your way out, you look to your left, to the east, and the exit sign is right at eye level and blocks the view, so that's kind of a traffic hazard. So, we were going to relocate that sign further north outside of the visible area as you exit the site. We've removed three parallel spots adjacent to the southern island. This is the island that is adjacent to the right-of-way.
So, right up through, right in this area.
There was actually four spots associated with that currently, and now we're removing all of those spots. So, there will be no spots adjacent to that island. That'll improve traffic flow exiting the property and also provide areas for better traffic flow entering the property. The, one of the main, well, I'll skip the main thing we talked about, but talking about that center island again, or the island north next to Ridge Road, was landscaping within that island. And I think at the workshop, myself included, we were all kind of wondering what was going on with that island. It seemed like kind of sparse, but we went out there, took pictures, counted up the landscaping, and that landscaping is actually fairly mature, and it's withstanded the test of time with salt and everything out there. There's over 18 plantings in that island. So, I think, I think we were all kind of led astray about the quality of landscaping, so I think that we're proposing no changes to that island. Also, on the site, our row of large grasses that are along the sidewalk of Ridge Road, so...
John, can I just ask?
Sure.
You're saying to that island, you mean the one to the south of the parking lot?
Correct.
As opposed to the one in the center that you're still talking about eliminating?
Yeah, the one in the center is being totally eliminated. There'll be no plantings there. But the island to the south, landscaping that I thought was all, that we all thought was sparse, is actually well-maintained and will be augmented with additional stone mulch as the project goes to completion. The other items we talked about, we had a small, kind of a small storm swale that was straddling two property lines that Robinos owns. We've modified the plan to show that solely on the Robino property, which is this area. And then going back to, I think, the largest topic of our discussion at the workshop was public access for pedestrians to the project site. We've reviewed this with the owners, you know, 99% of their customers are not pedestrians, they drive to the site. So, access for pedestrians is something they never really thought about, but they looked at it over the last couple of weeks as we had time to. Still, there was really no need for them to do that. But we understand that we want to bring the traveling public from Ridge Road, people that are walking along that. At the workshop, we all agreed to an area east of that center island to be hatched, striped, or even stamped asphalt as a topic. We really didn't like that spot, but we said, you know, it sounds like maybe it's logical. And, but we were working with it and wanted to talk more about that tonight. But about 20 minutes ago, I received the town engineer's comments, and I guess I'm going to toot his horn a little bit. He came up with, I think, a better idea, so I'll kind of skip ahead and go to his comments. He reviewed the plan, like I said, Michelle was kind enough to send these to me about an hour ago. He talks a little bit about, his comment number one about our site is, "Consider relocating the sidewalk to the east side of the entrance." So, this would require us to eliminate a spot. And although the spots are very valuable to the Robinos, they looked at it, and we all agreed that eliminating that one spot lining up pedestrian access directly to the front door would be something they could handle. So, we're looking at eliminating one of their valuable spots in the front of their building. And they're good to go with that, but they do like us to really just consider striping that area instead of the stamped asphalt. They really feel that asphalt stamping, although the contractors, they talked about, there's a significant expense to it, it also collects water, and they don't, they'd rather just stripe it, and then they can maintain the striping. So, that's really where we are with that. So, we don't have any problems with the other town engineer comments. They're kind of small in nature, you know. Who owns the sanitary sewer? I think we all agree it's the town of Runnecoyt public sewer. The rectangles he's talking about is the proposed dumpster, and the contours, so he asked about the contours to change the storm water directed to the dry wells. Well, that's what our intent is. As I mentioned at the workshop, the current dry wells have solid manhole covers on them with the regrading that we're proposing and replacing those with open grates. We're trying to try to get more water to the dry wells to alleviate the ponding that's within the parking lot. So, the town engineer comments, we're happy with, and we're going to take Mr. Chaffron's comment about the striping for the pedestrian access in that area. I hope you agree with us. And I think that touches base on all the comments that we had from the workshop and the town engineer. I did receive Monroe County DRC comments. They have very little comments because there's nothing in the public right-of-way. And I hope you agree that Robinos is a, you know, a business, a well-established business in the town of Runnecoyt, and you can understand their little bit of frustration from hoping just to go pave the parking lot to having to wait a few months. They have customers constantly coming into them, "Hey, when are you going to fix this parking lot?" So, I know that they have contractors chomping at the bit, so it's going to be in the next couple of weeks if everything goes well tonight. So, with that, I can address any questions you have.
So, John, I'm trying to visualize where you're talking about putting the striping.
I could show that to you right here. Is one of the microphones working?
Of course they work.
All right. So, if you can see over here, this is the entrance coming in, and this is the center island. We talked about hatching this area adjacent to the island. What we want to do now is eliminate this parking spot and hatch it right here. So, that, this spot would be eliminated, that'd be striped, and go right to the front door.
And I think we talked at the workshop that the recommendation from the, I forgot the group that came and presented to us, there were some guidelines. They said either, you know, the stamped pavement or striping is acceptable as long as it's distinguishable, so...
Yeah. And we like to go with stripe.
Okay. Is there any questions, other questions from the town board members?
The only question I had, with the movement of the sidewalk or the stamped area, striped area, they're walking right across traffic pulling into there, right?
They're, well, no, they're going to be east of the, east of the entrance.
They're actually not, no.
So, now you're not crossing the entrance.
You're almost coming across the...
Okay, but if you use that, the parking lot, the part of the parking lot that's on the south portion, or the southeast portion of the building, you would be...
Yep, you're still going to go, but I think you're bypassing a lot of the main traffic, maybe someone trying to scoot in off of Ridge Road. I think crossing that area south of the building's more controlled. So, I think it's a great comment by the town engineer.
I have a question. So, the pedestrian crosses across, like, in a new location, which I do think is a better spot, too. But then, how do they get to the sidewalk? Do they have to leave through the drive aisle?
I see your point, that there's no asphalt there, there is some grass plantings there. So, we have a lot of pavers that are in that island, so what I'd like to spec is some of the pavers that we're moving from that middle island, we'll just pave that, put pavers in that area, if that works for you.
Yeah, that would be a lot better.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question. If you take the dry wells, which have solid covers on them, and you put a grate on them, can you call them dry wells anymore?
I think the act of the dry well is... I'm always trying to answer your question. Jack? Got me. No, I think they're still considered dry wells, just to the fact that they're structured themselves, have holes in them.
Jerking the chain.
Yeah.
Any other questions? With that, I'd like to open it up for the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak about this matter, please come to the podium.
I'm Gail Marie Giordano, 54 Paxton Road. I've been a longtime customer of Robinos since they were on Portland Avenue. As we all know, they're a family-run and family-owned business. They employ many people in Runnecoyt, and there's many customers in Runnecoyt that go there. Robinos, I have to say, isn't Runnecoyt because I truly believe they want to be. If you know anything about Robinos, they can move to the moon, and the deli and meat counter would still be six deep on Saturday, okay? So, they choose to stay here, they don't have to be here. He's trying to improve his property, him and I believe it's his sister, are trying to improve the property for the customers and for the looks of Runnecoyt. I think the town really needs to consider this and approve it. I think we have other things to worry about, like the zombie houses, the old library, the old mall. We have a lot of eye sourcing in Runnecoyt, and we have a lot of businesses leaving Runnecoyt. I'm on social media a lot, and everybody's saying, "Well, why do businesses leave Runnecoyt? Why don't businesses come in Runnecoyt?" I think you really have to consider the reason why businesses want to stay and the reason why businesses go. And like I say, I've been the rest in the 61 years. I used to go to Robinos of my father on Portland Avenue. I see absolutely no reason why that this shouldn't be granted.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? With that, I'll close the public hearing. John, I don't think you have anything to add to the comments that were made.
I'd like to rebut that.
So, with that, first matter of business, oh, I'm sorry, is there any other conversation from the board after the public input, anything? Nope? Okay. So, the first matter would be seeker. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, on the issue before us, PB 17317-2, I would recommend that this be an unlisted action and a negative declaration, and that we proceed to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Put on Michael. With that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes, anybody against, please say nay. The ayes have it. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion that in the application PB 17317-2, upon the matter of request by Land Tech, acting as agent for Robinos Italian Food Corporation, for revised site plan approval, that we approve the application with the minor modification to relocate the pedestrian access per the town engineer's comment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's seven to nothing. Thank you for investing in Runnecoyt, just sort of the record. I used to go to the Portland Avenue as a little kid. Dragged me in because I wouldn't go in because it smelled so bad, but now I love this. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think it's mostly good they got to drag you out, right?
Now you got to drag me out.
And the intern didn't even get to talk.
I know, that's not fair. Should have been...
Did see him walk into property though.
Did you? Is your intern working for rent or...
Ah!
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 17317-3, upon the matter of request by Clark Patterson Lee, acting as agent for Rochester Regional Health, for revised site plan approval to construct a plus or minus 156 space parking lot on premises 1371 East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing district.
Mike, do you want to give him a microphone?
Yeah, would you like a microphone?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Norm Gardner with Clark Patterson...
Is it on? Wait, I'll try again.
Good evening, Norm Gardner with Clark Patterson Lee, representing Rochester Regional Health, which with me tonight is Jim Harrison and Michelle Scheller with Rochester Regional Health also. Tonight, we're here to talk about a project that was before this board in November of 2016. It was to construct a car wash and a self-storage unit at 1365 Ridge Road. This spring, Rochester Regional Health approached the Daniele family about purchasing the back part of the lot, which was going to be the lot for the self-storage unit, and use that to construct a 156-car parking lot that will be used as a secured parking lot by Rochester Regional Health, as they intend to develop the former Tops Plaza, which is located to the east of the site. Original car wash had a co-use of the existing curb cut on Ridge Road that allowed car wash people to come in. Also, the self-storage unit was accessible through that same entrance and into the back. We had that same concept that was submitted with the site plans, and at the workshop, it was clear that that probably wasn't the best use of this land according to the board and their wishes. So, we looked at the option of moving that access and actually cutting off access from the car wash to that parking lot, because there's really no coexistence required there. The car wash and the secured lot that RGH is using won't have any co-use, and if somebody wants to go get their car washed, they can find their way to get to there. So, there doesn't need to be that same use. The concerns that this board had and Monroe County DOT had regarding the traffic at that intersection for the Royal Car Wash won't be a problem now. Couple other things that were asked for was blue lights. There is, RGH is very committed to the security of this parking lot. They have a gated access to this parking lot. The only people that will be parking in this parking lot are people that have, employees that have a tag or some sort of, they know who's parking there. It's not a public lot for use of the Tops Plaza Mall at all. We have looked at all of the other requirements. We received the comments from LaBella this morning and have looked at them. There are really no showstoppers. Apparently, they are also in agreement that the plan that you have in front of you is something better with the lot access to the south, so that there'll be access to the Goodman Signal. They had some minor comments on the storm sewer, ownership of the storm sewer easements, things like that. Certainly, no issues with making all of their changes that they've requested. We also received the Department of Development from Monroe County comments. Their comments were very minor also. We see no issues with any of those, and they don't really require any changes to our plans. So, with that, you know, we certainly would be open for any other questions.
I have one simple question based on the map. According to the map, do you still retain the, is this a common, common way?
It's not clear from that map.
It's not clear from this map. Who, if you look at the map, if everybody has this new map that we received, it almost looks like the parcel's been split into two.
Yes, the parcel, there is two lots. The car wash is on its own parcel, and it technically does not have access to Ridge Road. The access to Ridge Road to prevent us from having a landlocked parcel in the back is through a strip of land that is going to be within an easement agreement to allow access to the car wash through the roadway that technically is on Rochester Regional Health's property. And there is a cross-access agreement that was at the request of Monroe County DOT to allow the car wash to get over to the signalized entrance out in front of Bank of America.
Just so this board is aware, the subdivision of the land is not this board's purview, it's not part of your approval. That's something that gets reviewed administratively prior to filing with Monroe County. So, when the time comes and any subdivision or changes in lot lines in the commercial district would be subject to the town's administrative review in concert with the town engineer to ensure that all necessary easements and anything that's relevant to the filing of any reconfiguration of the lot lines. And so, we would ensure that that's addressed properly and in conformance with both county DOT and our own requirements. And that would happen outside of this board's site plan approval related to this separate lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, but we're still approving that section of land.
Right. So... I've got just a question that you might be able to help me with. When we approved the Royal Car Wash, we approved some areas for them to put snow as they were removing it. I think that that area has been considerably shrunk under the new plan. They were actually talking about moving it all the way to the back, to the, basically to 104 for snow removal. And I wonder how this plan is now affecting our approval of their initial, their initial application?
I can address that.
Okay.
We do have a snow storage area shown at the, what we used to have the connection between the two lots is now a dead-end road that will be dedicated for snow storage to be put in that area and to be pushed into that area. Rochester Regional Health's parking lot will be totally separate, so all their snow storage will go to the back of the lot toward the storm water management facility. But we do have a snow storage area on the car wash lot shown on our plans.
And that's what I'm looking at though, because that's considerably smaller than I think we originally talked about. And I understand that it did include self-storage, but I'm...
I think the original approval, when it talked about the clearing of the snow, a lot of the area would be around the snow, around the, what was then the self-storage. And so now with the parking lot, they still continue to maintain snow storage areas. And then Royal Car Wash, obviously, there's some dedicated space now shown with this submission. However, there's also ample green space along the perimeter in, on the interior of the lot that would allow them room to clear their, their roadways, so...
And Norm, if I'm understanding you correct, because I think, based on looking at this, the only reason that that dead-end road is kind of shown going as far as it is is because that was already constructed in the anticipation of this back area?
That has been rough graded to date, yes.
So, so that little end of the road area there itself could really be snow storage as well?
That's, yes, that's what is dedicated to the snow storage, is that end.
Okay. I just, I don't have any concern. I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement that what we decided on, on the original application was being satisfied with this new construction. I do have another question and I'm, sorry, Mr. Chair, if that's all right.
Okay with everybody failing his...
Let's take the vote.
Right now, the grading of the land goes pretty high up as you're heading south on the property?
Yes.
Is that going to be smoothed down or what? I mean, I looked at it...
Yes.
In anticipation of coming to have a discussion with you and the rest of public about this, so we'll go down.
The grading plan that is shown in the project set does show that there's approximately 3,000 yards of material that has to be removed from the site. And the site will essentially grade from north to south to allow sheet flow drainage into the storm water management facility, similar to what was approved in the Royal Car Wash application in November.
And then one, hopefully, final question from me is that the pedestrian walkway, I just want to be clear, what's happening to folks that are actually parking in the lot? Where are they going from the lot? I see what's on here, but I also know that they're walking right into the back of a current brick building.
Jim, do you want to address any of this?
I'll go with this one, thanks. Hi, Jim Harrison, I'm with Rochester General Hospital. I'm the Director of Facility Planning. I think everybody who knows that we're developing the former Tops building for a ambulatory care facility. We have plans to further develop that plaza as time, time moves on and as current leases expire. We're actually going to be bringing a plan to, to move a outpatient physical therapy practice into that site right next to the liquor store. So as our, as our future development of that plaza continues, we anticipate that there will be more and more employees going to work at that, at that site. And what we don't want is for our employees to be taking up parking spaces that could be dedicated for patients. So we want patients to have the closest parking to the services that they have access and we'd like to be able to park our employees elsewhere. We just saw this as an opportunity and so we want to park our employees in this, in the surface lot next door, but we need to create a safe and secure passageway from that lot into the plaza. And it's very astute that you recognize that. We would like to install a passage, a secure pass-through through one of the vacant storefronts that we have there sometime in the future when that need arises.
So you'll do that in concert with the construction of the lot or as you're moving?
Yeah, as, as, as use develops. So quite honestly, we don't know what the, what the immediate use of that lot will be other, I mean, we want to use it for employee parking. We don't know how many employees will truly be parking there when we finish the lot. So we think that that, that that need will ramp up slowly over time, but as soon as we start to park employees there, we'll have to establish that link and that connection into the plaza next door.
Okay. And then I do have one more question. I've been through the back of that plaza. There are spots like the rental center...
Yes.
That actually has a huge dumpster area that would not make that really negotiable for two-way traffic.
Right.
What's the plan to allow that to happen?
We'll work with them and we'll rework that entire back passageway. It, it obviously has to be in a lot better condition than it is at this current time. So, you know, in order for it to make it, to make it anywhere near usable for us, but we, we intend to do some work back there and then clean that up. We'll work with them and with the other tenants.
So that'll be mitigated and...
Yes.
All right.
Can I just add, based on Alan's questions, so a timing perspective, when are you going to actually build this parking lot?
We'd like to actually build the parking lot this year. So we'd like to get that in place and then move forward with the other improvements as time goes on. What we don't want to do is, is be boxed into a corner when all of a sudden we have a, we have a need for parking and we don't have a parking lot.
Okay, so people will start using it this year?
Yes, well, yeah, we think, we think maybe we'll have a few people using it this year or possibly next spring. So the, the timing of that, of the Tops building project that's going on calls for that to be certified by the Department of Health and in use by early second quarter of next year.
Okay, so 2018 really then, right?
Yes.
So I guess my only question was based on Alan's questions, you would ensure that the, the passageway behind the buildings is clear whenever this is built and start to be used?
Yes.
However, the walkway may not be immediate until the need arises to take the...
As soon as we start putting our employees in that parking lot, we'll have to have that walkway established.
Oh, so both of those will occur?
We'll have to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Spencer?
I just want to piggyback just a little bit on, on what Alan said about the vehicular traffic going behind the building. Obviously, there's some dumpsters and some things that are relatively easy to mitigate, but the Marshall's lot has an angled loading dock that kind of puts the truck at an angle directly into what would be the, the, the new vehicular drive lanes. So I'm just kind of wondering, is that a scheduling, how would that?
We see that as a scheduling thing, so as an employee parking lot, the traffic's going to be pretty limited to very specific times of the day, right? And I'm fairly sure that we could work with Marshall's, they're a good tenant on, on scheduling of deliveries to make sure that we don't have that conflict out there.
Okay. Just like, go ahead, Brad.
If that was blocked for some reason, the cars can still exit the other way, right, at the signal as a backup?
Yes, they, yes, they could. Now, we, we don't want them to do that unless it's needed as a backup for some unusual reason, so we will be directing our employees to use that, that back access roadway to get to the lot from Goodman Street.
I have a question. Do you expect any of the cars that are parking down at the Kodak parking lot over there at your other facility in the other corner of Goodman's?
The Redmond campus?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, not at all. I didn't recognize that as the Kodak facility.
Used to be.
I should have.
JB Hunter?
I should have, yeah, JB Hunter, I remember that.
I could go back further than that, but I don't want to pull here.
And you said that there would be a blue light back here, right?
Yes.
It will be covered by security like it is at the other lots?
Yes.
And did we see a response to the, we did to the lighting, right? You're going to use the sensors?
Yeah, we agreed with, we agreed with LaBella's assessment, yep.
And the shielding for the... Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Thank you. You can have a seat and we'll call you back up to respond to any of the questions.
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road. I just had a question about timing here and the ultimate disposition of the other businesses. Is the idea that those businesses will all go away and RGH is taking over everything or what's going to happen in the future? Thanks.
Anybody else who has, wants to make any comments? With that, I'd like to close the public hearing. Would you like to address any of the questions?
Sure. So Marshall's is...
Going to ask you to go right to the podium if you don't mind for our viewing audience at home. Thank you and on Facebook Live.
Yeah, and my, my wife might be watching this. So we have some excellent tenants that we would like to keep and actually, many of them have very long-term leases with us. Marshall's is a great example of, of a terrific tenant. Chipotle, Starbucks, the bank, all great tenants, so we'd like to, we'd like to hang onto them and they're, they're good for us. We think that we're good for them. I think a lot of our employees like to run over to Marshall's during their lunch hours and shop and I'm pretty sure that a whole bunch of them, you know, stop through the Starbucks every morning on the way to work and go to Chipotle for lunch. So we have no intentions of clearing out the plaza. Thanks.
Thank you. Does the board have any other questions, clarifications?
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to kind of note that we, I think we talked about this in the workshop that I think the landscaping plan is superb. I think the lighting plan is, is really well done. It's high-quality stuff, so I just wanted to make that on the record.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is thank you for listening to all the concerns that were brought up at the workshop and addressing them in the manner that you did. So thank you. So based on that, we need to do seeker. Do I have a motion? I'll go from the left-hand side of the house this time.
No, go ahead, Brad. Fine, Mike. Upon PB 1, upon matter PB 17317-3, Clark Patterson Lee, acting as agent for Rochester Regional Health for revised site plan approval to construct 156 space parking lot on premises 1371 East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing distance, I would like to say that we make this an unlisted action with a negative, negative declaration in the terms of seeker.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? With that, it passes seven to zero.
It's not that easy, is it, Brad?
Could we have a motion now?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chair. Upon the matter of PB 17317-3, at the request of Clark Patterson Lee, acting as agent for Rochester Regional Health, for revised site plan approval to construct 150 plus or minus space parking lot on the premises of 1371 East Ridge Road in an M1 manufacturing district, that the plan be approved as presented.
Could I recommend one condition?
I have two, but go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to say that the town and county comments be complied with and that the plans be modified accordingly.
I'm sorry, the town and county...
Town engineer and county planning department comments be complied with and the site plan revised accordingly.
Well, what I was going to ask was, we only talked about, they agreed to the vehicular connection to Goodman Street will be cleared. Can we put that in as a condition that it's cleared at the time of use? I'm asking.
You're talking about the back drive?
It's called the vehicular connection to Goodman Street on the map, so that's what I called it.
Oh, I, that's a reasonable request and they seem to be nodding in approval, so...
Yeah, so the way, the way I would phrase that is that that thoroughfare be cleared for traffic.
Wait, it's a fire when it requires an awesome.
So it has to be cleared? Yeah. It has to be then. And then I also had the pedestrian walkway to the medical campus will also be installed at the time of use.
And you may just want to clarify, time of use, maybe say for medical employee parking because I can envision some construction, parking and staging and things like that before they, they put it to the use of their employees.
Thank you. If everybody's okay with those three additions?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Could we ask for one year to get that connector installed?
I'm okay with that.
With, I'm sorry, I missed...
Within one, you must know if it's okay within one year.
I think you probably should go back up to the podium. And I, I don't, is that within our ability?
So the, yeah, so, but the, also the applicant would, from the time of approval from this meeting, would have one year to initiate the project. And actually, there's mechanism for adding, asking for an extension under extenuating circumstances. So in theory, you would have a year to initiate the work associated with this approval and then you would have at least a year to complete the construction. So the timeline would work in, in favor of what you're requesting, just sort of by virtue of how it works anyway.
Right. I just wanted, we, we were approving, you know, a map that showed it going to the back of a building, so...
No, I understand.
I didn't want somebody else to look at it something and say, what? So as long as we got that in there. Is everybody okay?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with all those changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. With that, do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, seven to zero. Thank you for continuing to invest in Aranda Quaid. If it's okay with everybody, I'm a little backed up on my paperwork and one of the board members requested a quick recess for five minutes.
Yeah, might be a second. I'll do a motion.
What's left on the agenda?
There is one item that was tabled.
There is one item that was tabled.
We've addressed all the public hearing meetings, you guys. We've addressed all the public hearings. And now, there's a couple of the items that were tabled. And one of them has come to us today. So, Michelle?
You'd have to do a motion first, Mr. Chairman, to remove it from the table, please.
There's a motion to take off the table. 4041 Baker's Park and 663-667 Titus Avenue, PB 1707-1.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And, um, just for clarification purposes-
Call the roll on that real quick.
I'm sorry?
Call the roll on that second?
I'll call the-
All those in favor?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Yes, slow roll.
You're earning your money tonight.
If you went to Catholic school, you'd have known that.
Thank you.
If you went to Catholic elementary school, you'd have known that.
I went to Catholic Elementary and Public in high school. Okay.
Thank you. Case number PB 1707-1. Upon the matter of request by I-Square LLC for revised site plan approval to modify an existing site plan to provide additional parking and modify proposed build-out on premises 4041 Baker's Park, excuse me, 400 and 401 Baker's Park, 633 and 667 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
And before you start, if I could just clarify, because I wasn't at the last meeting, it was tabled for two reasons. One of them was shared parking. And the second was a landscape plan. More details, we were looking for more information on both.
Yes.
Correct?
Uh huh.
Okay. So, if we can keep our conversations in those two areas, that would be great.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Diane Zachrin. I reside at 282 Bellhurst Drive. I am currently a contractor for the I-Square project, providing engineering, design and contract administrative services. And I'm here tonight representing I-Square LLC with offices at 400 Baker's Park for the follow-up to last month's meeting, request for site plan approval for the modified plan. The Nolans unfortunately could not be here this evening due to a previous commitment. So, last month's meeting concluded. I watched the video. I thought there were four things that were left open. A stamped site plan with the fart, with the parking figures corrected, additional information on shared parking, a detailed landscape plan for the primary green garden at the frontage of Titus Avenue Baker's Park. And someone requested a formal calculated impervious surface coverage figures for this modified plan. On the stamped plan we submitted last week, please note that the parking figures in the upper right-hand corner have been corrected. The parking expansion consists of 20 spots at the lot where IHOT's building used to be, 21 at the lot east of Building 5, and 19 at the House of Guitars I-Square Extended Lot for a total of 60 in new locations. As you can see, we did away with the third northernmost entrance into this extended shared lot, which resulted in two fewer spaces than were discussed last month. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we've added a six-foot wide sidewalk between the north edge of the House of Guitars and I-Square Extended Lot and the south edge of the new green space, which reduces the green space depth to 21 feet. As Mr. Nolan stated last month, the plan is to construct the parking expansion for the IHOT's and House Guitars I-Square Shared Lot in this construction season. The Building 5 expansion will not occur until the 2019 and 2020 construction season. And we'll be coming back to the board when designs are available for Building 5, including any outdoor seating arrangements and also for the green space signage. With respect to shared parking, as part of I-Square's original plan for redeveloping this area, they committed to not posting parking restrictions on any of their spots or threats of towing people that happened to park there, both of which they've held to since the initial construction. For the House of Guitars properties, which not only includes the House of Guitars building, but also includes the buildings that currently house the shoe repair, the tailor and the photographer businesses, the House of Guitar actually owns the west portion of the central shared parking lot as the site plan shows with the parcel lines. And I-Square created Music Way to provide access to this lot for all of their businesses' use. Additionally, there are 42 on-street parking spots that were constructed by I-Square, but for use by anyone. Mr. Nolan has regular conversations with his tenants, as well as the surrounding businesses, about locations where employees should park to assure customer ease close to the buildings. We've also provided a landscape schematic with plant lists and illustrations of how it will appear from Titus Ave. The plan includes a 90-foot knee-wall screen that covers 72% of the lot width, positioned approximately three feet north of the hair extraordinaire facade. And for those of you that received this revised plan via email on Thursday, the hard copy that I handed you this evening has one adjustment to the landscape plan. The hair extraordinaire building, it's actually outside the landscape features, but the hair extraordinaire building was initially shown too close to Titus Avenue. So, that's been corrected for your hard copy this evening. In terms of the impervious surface coverage, as you can see in the handout, the calculated impervious surface coverage for the I-Square project site in total is just under 48%. That number actually excludes the benefit of the rooftop gardens on Buildings 1, 4 and 5, which capture and direct the rooftop runoff to our underground collection tanks in front of the stage. If we include the impact of the existing rooftop gardens in Buildings 1 and 4 and what we hope to have on Building 5, our impervious surface coverage for the project site would end up just under 32%. Finally, I'd like to make a few comments about the Titus Cooper Hudson Master Plan Design Guidelines, which I helped author in my role as the local advisory committee chairperson back in 2003. Although building facades are encouraged when business conditions permit, parking areas sighted along Titus Avenue are not prohibited in these guidelines as long as they satisfy a couple key conditions. They need to be screened with landscape. And more importantly, they need to not disrupt a continuous pedestrian path. This parking expansion plan does not add any vehicular entry points along Titus Avenue, but rather maintains those vehicular access from the side streets. This plan also provides a continuous east-west pedestrian path along Titus Avenue between Stranahan and Grange, so that pedestrians are no longer forced to land in or cross through a parking lot from the sidewalk to traverse these two blocks, a condition that has been there since I moved to Arondacoyt almost 30 years ago. You always had to step into some kind of parking area to get across that two-block area. I think that this fact, coupled with the new green space buffer, will provide a comfortable, safe and continuous pedestrian experience across the north end of the I-Square development site that satisfies the design guidelines intent for these pedestrian spaces. Thank you. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Michael, would you like to start?
Yeah, I actually, the spaces you're adding to the north of what, to the north of Music Way?
Uh huh.
Behind the green space, north of Music Way. Those are going to, those are going to dead-end? There's going to be a sidewalk across the end. They're not going to-
Open out into Baker's Park, correct. They will, they're not going to open into Baker's Park. Yeah, we're going to maintain the two existing ingress and egress points. Just a little south of that. But we lost two spots.
Right.
To ride back out.
I just wanted the clarification on that. And we're also, part of this, we are also approving the pavilion, correct?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, the, at least the pervious for the pavilion.
Okay.
Uh huh.
Because I know, I know, Mr. Nolan did provide us with some of the screen, the roofies, some samples of the roof.
Yes, yes.
Or ropes.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. So, we're, we are, this is a guess of clarification for you. Just the impervious or the whole pavilion?
The entire pavilion, I believe, was part of the site plan. So, I think the request is for the structure itself, not just the box where it's going to go.
And I'd urge the board, if we're going to entertain approving it, to approve some kind of structure as well. Yeah, okay. Just for clarification, you mentioned there's a new sidewalk that's going to be where there was some landscape. Could you just point out maybe exactly where the-
Yes. If you look at the central section right along the west side of Baker's Park, that green rain swell. Just south of that, there's a new six-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. That was not in the previous site plan. So, we added that so people don't get stranded on that side of the parking lot. And that ended up reducing the depth of the green garden by those six feet.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Spencer, any other questions?
No, I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll-
Believe it or not, I think I'm okay. The only thing I did notice was driving by today at the end of Stranahan, there are dumpsters. Is that a permanent spot for those?
No, we've been moving those around from construction because we don't have any of the spots behind Murph's at the current moment. So, we wanted to reserve the spots in the maintenance building, you know, for all of their customers and ours. So, yeah, those have relocated a couple of different times. But I think they're shown on the site plan. Pardon me?
They're going to get a home?
Yeah.
All right. I see where they're supposed to be. I know where they are today.
Yeah.
All right. No, I, Mr. Chair, that's it. I appreciate the response that we've gotten for the landscaping plan. It does make, I think, the job a lot easier for us to act on behalf of the citizens of Arondacoyt when we have a complete picture. I think it looks really nice. It does.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
To the right of Building 5, for the parking lot that's going to be on Titus Avenue, is there landscaping in front of that?
Yeah. The, um, I guess it would be a trapezoid at the north end of that parking lot. Represents landscape that is similar to those that surround our other parking lots today. I believe they provided you pictures of what those look like at the last month's meeting. The thing that was discussed and we're considering the last meeting was whether we wanted to provide an Ellen Building 5 and/or extend some outdoor seating along that. So, we haven't made any decisions about that, obviously. But when we come back with the Building 5 design, we discuss that. But for now, that landscape would be the screen similar to what we have on the rest of our parking lots.
Okay. And so, for clarification, you're asking us to approve the parking to the right of Building 5?
That's correct.
Parking north of Music Way?
That's correct.
And the green, the green rain swell and concrete sidewalk?
That's correct.
However, Building 2, which is unknown at this point in time, is going to remain green at this point in time?
Building 2 is approved as part of the original application. We don't have any scheduled plans to build that out, but we're not withdrawing it at this time either.
Okay. But you're also not going to build that parking lot?
That's correct.
I just wanted to-
That's correct.
Because it's still showing on the map.
The parking lot to the west, you're-
It's just going to go, yeah. Parking lot to the west of House Guitars is also going to be-
That's correct. Where the old Arondacoyt Hot Structure was. Yeah. So, yeah. So, the Building 2 spots are actually shown in the right-hand top corner of the site plan as part of that count. But we don't have plans to build that at this time.
And also the pavilion fully, and it's going to have-
Yes.
Materials as the other-
Yes.
Line of sight. I'm good. Michael?
It looks wonderful, Diane. Thanks for the nice landscaping job.
Thank you.
I'm very happy with everything tonight.
Bradley?
Okay. Hi. I want to thank you for the landscaping plan. I think it's really nice-looking. But I-
You're welcome.
Although I think that the landscaping looks nice, I don't think that it is, and although it might comply with the guidelines for the area, I don't think that it goes along with the spirit or the overall intent of the guidelines of that district. I think that the overall kind of intent of those guidelines are to create sort of an urban village with shops along the facade or along the street. And although the landscaping plan looks nice, it's sort of, I think, in my opinion, is disguising something that is not really supposed to be there. So, I'm not, I'm not keen on this idea to lose the buildings against Titus Avenue. Titus, Titus Avenue, and then put flowers in front of parking with the fencing. Um, and I also, um, believe that the guidelines are really focusing on shared parking, and although, um, your House of Guitars and those properties own some of this lot and allows them to park in there, um, when Mr. Nolan was here last time, he was telling us, and I believe what he said was that, you know, um, Hair Extraordinaire opens up in the morning, and there's seven chairs in there, and seven, um, hairdressers come in, and then seven clients come in, and then that's fourteen spaces right off the top, which I get, but there's not fourteen spaces over here in this area for, um, that's connected with House Guitars as is laid out. So we're still gonna be having folks, probably, who are gonna be parking in here, and I think that, that it should not be an informal agreement. I think it should be a formal shared parking agreement, um, with this area, because you're saying that you need more parking, and becau, and part of the rationale for the need for more parking is because you're happy to share and other people are using, so let's make sure that that is recorded, um, properly. Um, I'm also wondering, I think you might have alluded to this, you submitted a great detailed plan for the rain garden swale area in front of the parking lot on the corner of Cooper and Titus, and, but I don't know exactly what's happening in front of the other parking lots. Does that include the brick pier and, um, wrought iron rail fencing, or is it only plantings?
No, in front of the House of Guitars and in front of Building Five, we plan to do the same sort of frontage as around our other parking areas. There's not the depth there.
So it's not including the fencing?
Pardon me? No, no fencing.
So I think at the very minimum, that there, I'm not, I'm not happy with the parking on, on, um, Cooper at all, like, I, I'm sorry, on Titus at all.
Okay.
I think that, um, I'm not opposed to more parking, but I don't like having it up against, um, Cooper, Titus, okay?
Titus, right.
I, I, and I think that if we do put parking there, which I'm not keen on, it has got to be very well screened, um, and that would at minimum include the beer, the brick, the prick, uh, the, the brick posts and wrought iron fencing on, in front of all of the parking that faces, um, Titus Avenue.
Okay.
Um, so I didn't know about that, and I also liked the idea, um, that was thrown out before of putting the wing or the L shape on the end of Building Five to conceal the bottom of the wind turbines, and also to conceal some of this parking. Um, they said that they didn't really wanna add more buildings, because when you put in more buildings, then you have more parking demand, but if the addition onto Building Five, which is an extension of Building Five, not necessarily putting more demand or more facilities for people to come to, but just something to disguise that parking, I think that that would be good. Um, but overall, I, I'm opposed to putting more parking up against, um, Titus Avenue. I don't have a problem with adding more parking, but I do not feel like that is the appropriate space for it. I think the landscaping band, uh, plan is really great and beautiful, but I, I think that it, it's not the intent, although it might comply, it's really not the overall intent of those guidelines.
Okay.
Oh, and, um, is there, uh, on the first plan, it shows lighting, um, where that sidewalk got put in, and then on the second plan, I see the sidewalk, but then no lighting, so I just didn't know if, I, I don't think it's important really either, I was just wondering if it was a discrepancy.
I think, and I actually don't think I have the previous plan with me, cause I handed everything out, so, I think the previous plan had light poles on the south edge of it, um, and it didn't properly reflect the, um, the fact that we actually have a concrete sidewalk there today with lights on it, so those are still shown.
Okay.
And then the streetlights, um, along Titus Ave and down on the, uh, Bakers Park, um, road are still shown.
The map I have is from seven twenty-seven, and it does show the lighting.
Yeah.
Seven twenty, so the, this one here, it looks like two light posts here and here?
Yeah.
It would be Titus Avenue, and then right where the sidewalk is added on the new map, it looks like there's two light posts on the old map.
Okay, yeah, we're not planning to add a double row of lighting at Titus Ave, yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? At Building Five and that parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
What's there right now?
Um, that is the whole frontage, although it's not set back the way the proposal is, it's set back a little further. The whole frontage, um, consists of the laundromat on the east and then Murph's, Aronacote Pub, and then empty space all the way over to Bakers Park. It was the previous home of Edward Jones, the Murray Karate Studio, and KJ's.
So you're asking us today to approve the parking right next to Building Five?
That's correct.
That currently houses businesses, that there's no schedule on?
Yes, but that, that won't be constructed until the leases expire for the current tenants and we come back with the Building Five construction plan.
So is it a problem with us approving that parking lot at the same time?
Past site plan review, um, have contemplated, um, reconfiguration of buildings in spite of where, where things are now versus where they might be in the future. So because it's showing how the building would be oriented and where the parking would be located, it's a future condition as part of the overall site plan for redevelopment. So it's okay to approve if the board is inclined to do that, even though it doesn't reflect current conditions, and it's not anticipated to change in the immediate future, because it's dependent upon, um, the release of lease agreements that would, right now, are dictating when redevelopment of those sites can happen.
Okay, I'm, I'm slow. So currently, for all practical purposes, Murph's is there, we don't know when it's gonna go away, when the lease is over, is when the building will, uh, demolition permit will be either issued or not issued, um, for that to be taken down, right? And today, we're being asked to approve this parking lot, is my understanding from the Chair's question. Is that incorrect? Wasn't that your question?
My question was, we're being asked to approve that parking lot today?
Yes.
And she said yes. That's what they're asking.
That's right, Alan.
Okay, and so my question is, we have to approve it tonight as-is?
You don't, you don't have to approve anything. I mean, it's, it's within your purview to approve it based on the future development condition, but if you take issue with that, that's something the board can discuss.
Okay, cause my understanding from the applicant is that they're gonna come back to us with a Building Five plan now.
Correct, they would need to, as part of the site plan approval, the, there's an overall approval for the layout of the site, and then as each building is ready to...
Comes online.
Comes online, you come, the applicant comes back to the, um, to this board for revised site plan with the very specific details associated with the footprint of the building, um, it's, you know, any related amenities and the site around the building and how it's oriented and laid out, and so Building Five, before it could be constructed, um, would need to come back to the board for final approval.
And may involve an alteration to this parking lot also if they decide to curb the building around to take another formation?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yep, you would have that ability.
This is not essential, then, that that gets approved as-is tonight?
It is.
We're requesting that it be approved.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, requesting approval of that.
And Carrie, I think this is probably a question for you. So site plan approval gives a year to commence construction, correct?
Correct.
So if they commence construction on other portions of the parking lots and so on?
Correct.
And, and this portion that Alan's talking about here, um, I, I don't know in leases or Murph's or whatever, but, but this lot can't be built until the demolition permit is issued, will there be an issue with the approval expiring?
From here, nope, there wouldn't be, because there's ongoing activity, so it's not just the development of a specific location on the site, but it's on the site.
Even, even if that ongoing activity stalls for a period of twelve months in between?
Correct, and there's actually a mechanism for asking for an extension if it's necessary, um, for the board, um...
I get, Mr. Chair, my only concern is that we're not sure what Building Five is gonna look like. We have a current tenant in a pre-existing building on this entire site. Um, I, you know, it's not what we wanted, but I think the rest of it, um, has presented very well, and I applaud you for taking the comments and to heart and bringing us something. I'm just a little leery of jumping right into Building Five and that parking lot at this moment.
Just as a point of, just as clarification, on the previously approved site plan, it showed Building Five and Building Number Six in a configuration that does not match what's there now, and so that was part of past approval, so it's certainly within the board's ability to approve a new footprint, even though it doesn't reflect what's on the ground now, and you certainly would have another, um, chance to review the more specific details when Building Five were to come online, cause at that point, the footprint, the exact footprint that's being shown on the site plan might be altered based on real-life conditions on the ground and the built environment, and so they could be able to, they'd be coming back to the board for the more detailed look at that particular segment of the site plan.
Okay, I don't wanna make this longer than it needs to be, so if they chose to build Building Five as it existed right now in front of me, and went ahead and did the, um, parking lot next to it, even though this board has, a few members have expressed concern about the, um, configuration of the building and its presentation to, or its relationship to Titus Avenue, they could go ahead and build this parking lot, and then Building Five would just be built, um, around that parking lot?
Seriously, if they conformed, unless, I mean, and I would defer to the, I mean, you can make that portion of it...
So, so what it sounds like the concern is to me is that, and Alan, correct me if I'm misstating it, but the concern is that if this parking lot's approved where it is, you're concerned about the board being, essentially, their hands being tied into the configuration of the building based on the location of the parking lot?
Especially if they go ahead and build it on, can, on the approval of us tonight.
Understood. And that is a potential implication of approving the parking lot in its current location, so if that's a concern that the board has, I think that's something you all need to discuss and work through, because it's a valid point.
When does the applicant plan on doing work on that parking lot?
For Building Five, East of Building Five, um, either late in the two thousand and nineteen construction season or in two thousand and twenty. So we wouldn't do demolition until that time, so it would be back before the planning board probably in two thousand and nineteen.
So just as a point of a thought, or in terms from a process standpoint, could, and I'm asking this actually to the deputy town attorney, could the board contemplate preliminary site plan approval related to the, at Elman and not issue final for the portion around Building Five and the related site amenities?
Yeah, and we're on, we're on the same page about that. I was thinking that, too, that the final stamp of approval wouldn't come until plans for Building Five were produced with some specificity, and then final approval could be granted as to the location of that parking lot and Building Five and its orientation to Titus and all of that.
So that would be a condition or part of the motion?
That would be part of the motion. You could grant final with respect to certain portions and preliminary with respect to the, the parking lot on the corner of Titus and Stranahan, um, and then final could be issued for that parking lot when the plans for Building Five come in.
Seeing, seeing as how the projected dates, I understand they're just projected, or Building Five and that parking lot seem to be in kinda conjunction, I, I mean, I think that's reasonable. I think that would ease some concerns.
Put together. Any concerns?
Well, I just wanna make sure none of the board members think we're turning that building horizontal. The things that we talked about considering was either extending an L from it, um, but it wouldn't cover all the way to Stranahan, and we're extending seating across that front edge for the restaurant spaces that are gonna reside in that building, so I wouldn't want anyone leaving with, you know, false expectations.
I think, I think we understand that, I think the concern that, that Alan was stating it again, correct me if I'm wrong, and this is certainly my opinion, is if we approve it based on this tonight, it kinda, it does tie our hands, I think, in, in our ability to, to look for some side of, some sort of seating or screening of seating area or anything, because now there's a built, approved parking lot in that location. I think it, it gives us, um, a, a better handle once we know what's going on with Five, what would then happen in that corner, like where the number twenty-six is there. Um, we're not, I, I think, I understand, I think we all understand that we're not talking about a building now that would go all the way over to, uh, Stranahan. I think, I mean, that's...
It may look exactly as presented today.
That's correct.
Right.
And we wouldn't really propose the seating until we knew what the restaurant was on that frontage, so...
Right, if it was a bridal store, it would make no sense to have seating.
And, that's true.
You never know, you never know.
That's true.
New business model.
Prominent, yep, so...
I would be real comfortable, Mr. Chair, um, with that aspect as, uh...
So do you understand the difference between preliminary and final?
I do.
So is there any concerns for that portion only?
Um, well, our preference would certainly have been to gain, um, final for the site adjustments, um, based on the changes from the original application, and leave the building architecture to, um, you know, when that is going to happen two years from now. So that, that's our request, so...
Can, can I ask a question? Why is he waiting for Murph's and the laundromat? Can he knock down part of those buildings now?
Um, that was investigated, it's, um, it's possible, but pretty expensive, and I guess I wouldn't wanna speak to more of that, um, so I wasn't privy to the details of it, so, um, yeah, we definitely looked at that.
The portion of the building that's, that's vacant is the wrong side of the building for what you're looking to do, right? I mean, because the laundromat and Murph's are really where the parking lot is, the empty portion is really where Building Five would go.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Oh, go ahead, anything else? I had a procedural question. So if the applicant wants us to do final on the whole thing, but the board is inclined to do only final on partial and preliminary on others?
You have the, you have the discretion to grant preliminary and final for certain portions and preliminary, uh, for, you know, that parking lot that we're talking about, if the board was inclined to do that.
But Rob, if they want, if he was to change it after we've approved it, he would have to come back in here and go through this again, right?
When, so if he were to change the portion of the, the project for which preliminary was granted, yes, he would have to come in and, and he wouldn't necessarily have to reapply, because we've granted preliminary approval, so he could come in as part of the review process to get to final and say, "I've made certain modifications," and that would be part of the Building Five review, so it would be somewhat seamless, um, as far as the review went.
So I'm gonna look to the board.
You know where I'm at.
Okay.
I'm, I'm into granting final approval for every portion except for that part.
So we still have more questions?
Um, there, um, at the site plan, there is, is there no screening in front of the, um, parking lot at the corner or at the former House of Guitars, I, uh, IHOTs?
Is there no screening?
Because I don't see any real indication of that on the site plan, no shrubs or anything like that, like over on the other side, there's a small band there on the top.
There's not a trapezoid there, is what you're pointing out.
Right.
Yes, our intent is to do the trapezoid on that section as well.
So, um, are you willing to put the wrought iron fences in front of those parking lots?
I don't, I don't think so, Brad.
No?
Um, no.
Okay, so you're not willing to put the, the fencing in front of those additional parking lots?
Right.
You're not willing to do a legal, uh, shared parking agreement, right?
Well, you mean with the last remaining, uh, property owner that we currently share parking with without restriction?
No, that, that it would be more or less public parking or something along those lines, I don't know what the details would be, I don't know, but that there, there would be a, a substantial, like, actual shared parking agreement, not something informal.
Okay, um, nothing legally with the remaining, uh, property owner, but again, with the House of Guitars, since they own part of the property, we're sharing it by design.
Sure.
With them, so...
Sure, um, so, and that there would never be a facade, a full building facade on Titus Avenue?
I wouldn't say never, but certainly not for the plans for this, yes.
More or less, on any wall we're looking, so... So basically what we're looking at is no facade on Titus Avenue of any building in I Square. Um, no fencing in front of the additional parking lots or, uh, you know, robust screening really on those other sides. So in the wintertime, when the plants are down, there would be nothing really to screen that parking, and no binding shared parking agreement.
Well, there are buildings that front on Titus Avenue, not the continuous, not the entire stretch, but building five certainly fronts on Titus Avenue.
Kind of.
Not kind of, at least, you know, it is.
It's the corner. It really isn't the main facade of the building.
Right. And the screening on the other two lots, not the primary green space on the corner, we would do what we've done with the other parking lots that do have structure even in the wintertime. They don't all die down to the ground.
So no fencing?
So, but no fencing.
Okay, so
Correct.
No, no primary facade on Titus, no fencing on the other two lots, and no legal shared parking agreement? Is that the, do I have the correct understanding?
With the one remaining property owner, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
Well, just one about the design guidelines. Um, again, I don't disagree that the preferred intent of the redevelopment of the area, given business conditions permitting it, would be to have facades along, um, the principal street fronts. However, the design guidelines themselves actually point out on page seven, how you would deal with parking that's fronted along the principal street front like Titus Avenue, and also provides illustrations on page 18 and 23 in appendix B of hedge rows that would suffice to screen the parking areas on there. So I
I don't disagree that it complies.
Respect, yeah.
I just don't think that it follows the overall intent of the guidelines.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
With that, I'll look at the board. We've had a lot of discussion. Anything else you want to add before you?
No. Unless we have any other questions.
I would like to make a comment on the, on the preliminary versus, versus final for that, that lot to the east of building five. I think by leaving that as preliminary, you know, that would be in the, that would be the board's preference solely because it, it leaves open some... It leaves a little wiggle room when building five is designed, you know? It, 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 because I know, we, we don't know what that restaurant's going to be.
That's right.
And as Alan pointed out, if it's a bridal shop, yeah, in the parking lot makes a whole lot of sense. It's going to be a restaurant. I know, when I go eat at I Square, if there was a restaurant or a bar with that outdoor seating, I, I would patronize that frequently if there was the outdoor seating. I really like that idea. I think that, uh, am I wrong, Alan, when I say that that, that's sort of the intent? Is that it, it leaves a little bit of, I don't want to say creative leeway, I don't know if that's a great way to put that, but that gives a, you know, a, a little bit of back and forth when it comes to building five design and being that the building five design and that parking lot are slated for basically the same exact time.
Right.
I understand, I understand, you know, I Square's preference to have the whole changes made. I, I, I understand that, that just kind of is like, we got it. But I think that leaves, when those two things, when, when that, when that area comes up, that leaves, it is one chunk that we can pretty seamlessly work on together. I mean, I, let, let, you know, let's be honest, I don't want to seem like this is opposing sides here. I want to work on this together with, with the Owens. I think, I want this to be something that's beneficial for both parties. I think that is a good way to, to do that. I don't, I don't know if that's, I don't know if anybody's in agreement with that, but that's...
Well, I think, I, I think Mike, my, my perspective on that is that it allows us to holistically review the building and that parking lot together.
Right.
I mean, that's what I, I, I'm in favor of preliminary approval on that. I, I think being able to look at that all as one thing, depending on what that use is, and I mean, two years from now, it might be that there's a large outdoor seat. We, I mean, we don't know either. Um, I, I would be in favor of a preliminary approval on that portion of it.
I also know that the comments on the fence area are going to be so overwhelmingly positive that the applicant will want to put the fence for Brad down at that area too.
Could, could happen.
Right.
So, so I think we've had a lot of discussion, and we're probably at the point that we could entertain a motion. However, I want to make sure if there's any more discussion, I think everybody's had a chance to give their opinions if they wanted to. Any other questions for the applicant at this point?
Just for the board's clarity.
Steph could talk too, thank you.
No, for the board's clarity, because there are so many parcels, and there are a couple, more than one parcel encompassed in this, for the purposes of the board's motion, the building five and the related parking lot is located on 400 Bakers Park. So in terms of making a motion, if that might help clarify, um, the portion of the parcel or the portion of the I Square development that you were discussing.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, excuse me if I could just ask a question about Carrie, what Carrie just said. Since we have, um, final site plan approval for probably about two-thirds of that parcel going south, it wouldn't be the entire address, right?
No, it would just be the portion, but they would want to refer to the address so that when they're saying
Okay.
for the purposes of clarity, they can reference building five and the adjacent parking lot located on
Okay.
This way there's, it's really clear
400 Baker's.
of which one we're referencing.
Mm-hmm.
One other thing I want to bring to, thank you. At this point, I think you could sit down unless there's any other questions for the applicant?
Okay.
You seem standing there though.
I'm, I'm, yeah, either, sure, sure.
I just want to bring to everybody's attention, it came in our package tonight. That was a note from Carrie that the proposed modifications to the site plan did not exceed any thresholds or significantly alter the potential environmental impacts contemplated in prior determinations of significance issued in association with past approvals of this project. Therefore, the recent negative declarations associated with the site plan will apply to the application currently before the board. Just want to read that in for the record. Thank you. Okay. So is there a point that somebody would like him to make a motion, or would you like me to make the motion? I'll try to make the motion. Okay. In regards to PB 1707-1, property addresses 400, 401 Bakers Park and 663, 667 Titus Avenue. Upon the manner of the request by I Square LLC for revised site plan approval to modify an existing site plan to provide additional parking and modified proposed build-out on premises 400, 401 Bakers Park, 633, 667 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district for both final and preliminary site approval with preliminary on the portion that includes building five and the adjacent parking lot located on 400 Bakers Park only. I'm looking for a motion of approval for any modifications to that proposal.
I'd like to
Oh, I'm sorry. One other addition before I forget, that there would be, um, I won't call it quadrangle, but there will be additional landscaping in front of, um, was it originally, was it building seven? Which building was over next, uh, west of
Building three.
Building three? That one of the conditions would be that the landscaping that's not shown on the current plan would show landscaping similar to, um, landscaping that was proposed on the preliminary next to building five parking lot.
And that all sign approval will come back to this board for final approval?
I think that's a given, correct?
Yeah. It's just, it's shown on the plan as a proposal.
Just to make perfectly clear, we're giving final site plan approval for everything minus, you know, aside from that lot directly to the east of future building five on 400 Bakers Park, correct? We're giving preliminary site plan approval for that.
Well, we're giving preliminary to building five and the extent, and the center parking lot.
Correct. And then everything else gets
Preliminary and final.
Gets preliminary and final, right?
Yeah, so the request on the table is for revised site plan approval in connection with the entirety of the project. The board's, as the motions propose, is granting preliminary and final revised site plan approval for all improvements shown except for building five and the adjacent parking lot on the corner of Titus and Stranahan for which you're granting preliminary revised site plan approval.
Thank you.
Do you need that moved?
Can I have a second?
Second.
With that, I'd like to do a roll call to ensure I captured the correct. Can we start? Brett?
Nay.
I'm abstaining.
All right.
Richard?
Alan?
Alan?
I'm a yay.
Spencer?
Aye.
Michael?
And aye.
I'm an aye. So we have five ayes, one nay, and one abstain. Therefore, preliminary and final approval is, as we recited for the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any minutes in front of us to review. Therefore, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
Meeting is
Second?
Meeting's closed.